Okay, everybody. Thank you for coming. Welcome to the 2022 Road Improvements Hearing, August 25th. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Martin from Bolton Mink, but the only thing I want to say is tonight is your time to say whatever's on your mind. I hope nobody leaves with something on their shoulders that they want to get rid of. So, this is your time. Go ahead, Mr. Martin. Take it over.
Anything else, Dave? My name is Phil Martin with Bolton and Mink. Some of you have probably been here before for an assessment preliminary or project improvement hearing in February, and then we had a information meeting in July. I facilitated with other staff the July meeting. We wanted to get more information, want to share more information, to lead us to this improvement hearing again. Again, this is a necessary step that the city goes through with their process, and as the mayor has indicated, it is your chance to give us input. The council is still weighing the decisions ahead, the main one being whether to proceed with any of the final design and prepare plans for construction next year. So with that, I'm going to go through this handout, which I might not have had enough out there. I can get more if people want them at a later date. But this follows exactly what's in the handout, and I will go through it fairly quickly to leave time for you to ask questions, to clarify questions, or just for you to provide general input. So, these are the items I'm going to go through, and I will follow this order. I imagine that everyone will be interested in assessment part of this, but we'll work through it as fast as we can. So the project scope, as many of you know, is the Wild Wind Ranch, Rushmore Boulevard and Trail, Birch Narrows, Whitefish Avenue, Hilltop Drive, and Woodland Drive. What you will notice if you were here previously was Harbor Lane is no longer in there, and nor is Cool Haven Lane. Both were taken out because they lacked easement. So the city will be proceeding with those at a later date when we've worked out easements, and we've actually with Harbor Lane figured out where it will go, and whether it would include any type of an off-street pedestrian trail. The improvements proposed, very similar to what you heard before. So at Wild Wind Ranch, full-depth reclamation, meaning we're going to chew the road up, we're going to use the material that got chewed up, we're going to pave on top of it. The only change that we've identified, because since the original meeting you went to in February, we had some soil borings done. The soil borings showed us that we probably should do a subcut of the entire width of the Wild Wind Ranch Drive instead of just one side. So that increased the project cost. Rushmore Boulevard and Trail, full-depth reclamation was proposed. We concur with that. We did do borings there. It's really set up very well for doing a full-depth reclamation. I think the thing that kind of cinched it for us, that it should be full-depth reclamation, is because many of the comments we received related to the approach to CASA 16, that in the wintertime, it's steep, so if you're at a stop condition, you'll spin getting onto 16. It was also, we identified in our research, that the approach is not directly or near the center of the right-of-way that the city has. It's skewed to one side. It forces water onto private property. So we also are going to change where that configures in the existing right-of-way. The intersection of Rushmore Boulevard and Trail is probably something that's involved over time, a little grass island. You can pick which way you want to go. This isn't a heavily congested area, but in general, with streets, we want to limit your choices to where you want to go. We want to make it fairly straightforward, so we'll probably make that a simple T-intersection. And then there's other areas where there's settlement that we'll take out and fix. And then drainage on all these roads, the key for us to help keep these roads, the investment that you want, you have good soils here, we need to keep the water off them. We need to get it to drain to the sides. We know that you respect this area. The quality of life is the trees and the lakes. We don't want to come in and create big ponds, pull down trees, but we want to look for opportunities to just create swales, get the water off of the pavement, prolong the life of the pavement. Birch Narrows Road, full-depth reclamation is what was recommended. We're going to hold out that there's potentially that chance, but when we did do soil borings there, we found that it had six inches of blacktop and sand below it. Now, six inches of blacktop sounds great. The sand under it is less than great. If you typically would build a road, you would want gravel, which is a mixture of larger rock, smaller rock, and binder, and then you put the pavement on top of that. It adds structure, and it's a good free draining. So with Birch Narrows, we might be looking at a reconstruct. We've done preliminary engineering. We're trying to get to the step to do the final engineering, prepare the plans. So when I say for Birch Narrows reconstruct, we're talking, we might chew the material up and get it out of there, grade it out, so that we don't create any run-on into people's property, down their driveway, into their garage, and then rebuild that road with blacktop. An improvement I think many people are very interested in is the Whitefish Avenue area. So Whitefish Avenue, Hilltop Drive, Woodland Drive, I consider Whitefish Avenue area. That was proposed as Batuminus overlay back in the original report that was done. We did have a boring done over in the area of the sharp curve, just by Hilltop and Whitefish. We were surprised that there was two inches of blacktop, and there was gravel under it. So a good start to a road. We consider a road kind of fully formed, fully constructed when it has at least three and a half inches of blacktop, and then the aggregate, the class five below it. This has two inches. As you've seen on Whitefish Avenue, there are areas of pretty good pavement. Then there's areas where we've had a lot more damage. So our proposal, looking at this, was a lot of this street is pretty good, and then there's areas that we probably need to patch. Because the road is going on 20 years, because it's only two inches of blacktop, and I know many of your driveways are probably two inches of blacktop, and maybe many of the cities you came from, you lived on a low-volume residential road, and it only had two inches of blacktop, we think getting that additional overlay of an inch and a half adds a strength to the road. So we concur with the original thought on this. We propose that we patch the worst areas, we do a Batuminus overlay, we take care of drainage on all the roads. I would say we look for opportunities to get water off of the pavement. And that the sharp curve by Hilltop, we look at taking some of that bank away, trying to work with that property there to create better visibility around the curve. We can't really change the alignment in there. So what we think we can do is at least give traffic an opportunity, or better chance to see that there are other cars coming around the corner. Now, you'll notice I did put an asterisk by overlay, and I have to be transparent with you and say that we've discussed quite a bit the idea of doing a patch and seal coat approach. So the chip seal coat approach, I'm sure you've seen if you've driven on 16 recently. It's that great black-looking material that is essentially oil, granite chip, and then a little bit more oil over the top, and they broom it off, and it works very well. So that type of an approach is more of a maintenance approach. The Batuminus overlay is an add strength approach, add life. I think with the Batuminus overlay and patching on Whitefish Avenue in that area, and the way the city's soils are and stuff, you'll get 15, 20-plus years out there, as long as it's continued to be maintained. If you do, the maintenance alternative, which is a pitch, is the patch and aggregate chip seal coat, I think that you're looking more like five to seven years, and it could go to 10. But you're looking, that's the thing, when the decision is ultimately made, you just have to understand what you're buying, and what you expect the performance to be. One of the aspects of the aggregate chip seal coat, if you go that route, is that after you get to the point where the road is starting to deteriorate, you won't do a Batuminus overlay on that. You'll be jumping up to the point of you'll have to do the full-depth reclamation. And to give you an idea, change, Batuminus overlay and really very basic numbers is about $50 a foot of street, okay? So if a street is 24-foot wide, for every foot, it's about $50. If you go to a full-depth reclamation, you'll pay about $96 a foot. So it's about double the cost. So when you think about what is the right approach, these costs are 2021 numbers. Let's get out seven years, does a Batuminus overlay, which is now not an option, is that jumped up to 60, 65 bucks? Has the full-depth reclamation jumped over $100? It's, the point being, sometimes you spend dollars to gain investment and life in the road. And honestly, that's where we aired on this. We said Batuminus overlay makes the most sense. And again, that's up for the city council ultimately to make that final So improvement cost information, similar, and I'm not sure if I know how to go backwards I can't see my arrow. Move that back so you can see these. Okay. Wild Wind Ranch. Wild Wind Ranch changed a little bit because we widened the road, or the subcut underneath. It added about $20,000 to that cost. Rushmore Boulevard and Trail, we kept the same cost. It was in the previous feasibility study. Birch Narrows Road, we kept the same thing there. We're talking about doing the same things. Whitefish Avenue, Hilltop, and Woodland Drive, that went down because we pulled Cool Haven Lane out of the cost on that, and we did keep the Batuminus overlay number in there with patching. One of the things that you'll note then is the maintenance alternative is the seal coat. And the seal coat cost, we estimate, based on, every year, Crow Wing County, to their credit, their highway department engages all the surrounding communities and says, do you want to get in on a project with us? Because really, in construction, economy of scale matters. If they're doing two miles of seal coat, or they're doing 20 miles of seal coat, you get benefits, because the contractor's in, they've mobbed in, they've got their stuff here, they can do things cheaper. So under this maintenance alternative, I see the city going ahead and getting some patching done prior to next year, and then engaging Crow Wing County and getting in the hopper with them to do this seal coat. One of the biggest things too, again, the seal coat, at least my understanding, that the city's policy is not an assessment improvement, it's a maintenance improvement. Improvement timing. So up to the first improvement hearing, you should be aware of that, that they started Wild Wind Ranch a few years ago. The city adopted an assessment policy in July of 2019. That's significant, because I know some of the comments we received at the information meeting is, I have a neighbor that was on a different road, and they never paid a dime. So that's one of the reasons why it's different here. Feasibility report was received. The city decided to delay after the first improvement hearing. We had an informational open house to try and give information, and also take information from those that attended. We also did have people that provided some comments on the web-based platform that we set up, that people could just provide input on their computer, and we did have email and phone exchanges as well. So where we sit is today. We're at the second try at this improvement hearing, with the idea being that we're going to share the information with you. You're going to ask questions, or provide input, and then the city will, either at this meeting or a future meeting, make a decision whether they want to proceed with telling us to get the final plans together. And if that's the case, we would want to have the plans done by January, because, again, we want to be in front of a contractor when they're trying to set their schedule for the year. And we believe, our experience has shown us, if we're out there in the beginning, we get the sharper pencil. We get the most competitive cost, and in the end, we're trying to save dollars for the city by doing this competitively, but properly. Bid and award in February and March, and then construction, I just put a summer 2022. These type of improvements are pretty quick. They're not like a sewer pipe or a water pipe excavation project. The full-depth reclamation can happen in a matter of a couple weeks. Tear it up, rip it up one week, get it graded out, be in the next week, wrap it up, make sure driveways are all tied in very well. So our assessment. We use the statute 429 process. It requires notification. It requires us to have improvement hearings. Do a feasibility report to look at whether it's feasible, practical. It tries to adjust the challenges that we may run into, and it tries to provide a preliminary assessment, or identification of cost. We applied the city's assessment policy to that. We do then provide a preliminary or mock assessment. This is what the number's looking like, that the city is going to look at assessing if this improvement goes forward. So this improvement hearing is where you're at today. Out of this, either comes the go or no-go, to make it simple. If it's a go, then the final assessment hearing happens in the future. The city has the option to do it immediately after they get bids in from a contractor, or they could wait till the project's all said and done. That's a city decision. The city doesn't assess based on what the cost that comes in at that bid. It doesn't assess based on what your footage of linear is along the road. It does it based on a market value benefit, that they have determined by hiring an appraiser to come in and say, if we did this improvement in this area, the market benefit or value benefit would be from something to something. So the city has done that. That's their approach with assessments. They feel that's very defendable. They feel that it matches their ordinance that says that we're not going to exceed the market value benefit. Assessment payment. So if we think about the development or the evolution of this process, if this gets built next year, the final assessment would be, the earliest I think it would be ready for recording at the county would be in November of 2022. So there's, you can pay your assessment upfront, or in full, within 30 days at no interest rate, or the city will put it on your property taxes, and over a period of time, and an interest rate which is 1% to 2%, is 2, 1% to 2% above prime, over a period of time, they will carry that, and you will pay it off. Right. Okay, so, this will be a little bit repetitive, but it's more detailed than how the process worked for these roads. So we had the opinion of market benefit range. That was completed by Nagel Appraisal Incorporated. And on Wild Wind Ranch, because that started early, and already was delayed prior to be involved with this, started, they did their appraisal in December of 2019. All the other segments were appraised in 2020 in December. So for the full-depth reclamation improvement segments, which are listed there, the appraisal market benefit was determined to be between $2,000 and $10,000 a lot. Okay? And so what the city selected was $4,000 at assessment. The Batuminus overlay improvement segments, which was Whitefish, Hilltop, and Woodland, the range is 1,000 to 3,000 per lot. And the city chose 1,000 as the assessment that was selected. So again, the process is simply, the city identified what the market value was based on the appraisal. They selected what they wanted to assess. They apply it to the properties that are adjacent to the improvement based on the zoning. And for instance, the reason I bring this up is if you own two lots, and your house is sitting on one, partially on one, but you're straddling two, likely with the zoning and stuff, you have one buildable lot, you're getting one assessment. If you had six lots that could be turned into two or three, your assessments would increase based on that. So I don't, if any of you had those questions, there is, in the original feasibility report, there is a preliminary assessment of how many there would be put out there, based on the zoning that's adjacent to the improvement. But to give some ideas, for the Wild Wind Ranch, those are large lots. The proposed assessment is to 13 parcels. Rushmore Boulevard and Trail, the proposed assessment is to 39 parcels. Birch Narrows, it's to 37 parcels. And to the Whitefish Avenue, Hilltop Drive, and Woodland Drive, the proposed assessment is to 151 parcels. That's basically what I wanted to go through as an overview before we opened up the floor to you. And again, the point here is your input. And if you have direct questions to me about what your assessment is, at least preliminarily, I can go through this and try and find this, or I'm happy to answer your question after, singly, individually, via email, or whatever. The normal process is, is you come up, and you state your name and address, because we take record. This is the evidence, if you will. This is the input that we receive as part of this. So Shire will be taking notes. We are recording this. I'm going to take notes. State your name, your address, and then provide your input.
Come on up, Jim. Start it off.
Okay. You're invited here, Dave.
I'm very in favor of getting our road fixed, because I walk it every day with my dog, and it's getting bad.
Name and address.
Jim McLellan, 12780 Rushmore Boulevard. Okay, the only question is, I don't understand the whole math of coming up with $4,000. Okay, estimated cost for Rushmore Boulevard, Rushmore Trail is $215. 39 lots comes up to 156,000. I understand the city is supposed to pay half or less. That was what we read in the original presentation last winter. So are we thrown into the mix with all the other projects, and helping them pay theirs, or we should just pay our own, in my opinion? So somebody got to explain that.
So you're saying make the assessment an equation of what the total cost of the job is?
Yeah. If it's 200,000, we'll pay 100,000.
Okay, the city has chose to go a different direction and go per naming assessments. But go ahead, Phil. Answer that.
I don't understand how you do that. You know, I mean, everybody's getting treated different. I mean, some developments got a whole bunch more lots than we do. I don't get it.
Yeah. The city doesn't, in the assessment policy that I have read, which is adopted, the city doesn't say what percentage they're assessing. They try and do it based on the market value benefit. So in some projects, they may end up, as a city, covering more than others, just because of what you said, the zoning and the development of lots that's been allowed to occur. So in this case, the 4,000, and I wasn't involved in this, was derived at, they saw 2,000 to 10,000. They probably could have gone down and said, well, these six are three, these seven are five, these two are nine, you know, something like that. But then the question, I think, that was probably raised was, does everybody use the road? You know, does a bigger lot use the road different than a smaller lot? And I'm assuming that's what the discussion was, but I don't.
I guess what I would add to that, for an example, Wild Wind Ranch Road, there's 13 property owners on it. It's 205,000. So those, you know, they still have a benefit to each property. They're still going to end up with a new road. And so what's fair? Because they're way under the 50%. Now, I don't know if that's a justification, but it works both ways, and unfortunately, you're on the downside.
So in other words, there's no way you're going to change it?
Well, I, you know, it's, I don't know. I'd never say that.
Yeah, well, I don't think it's fair.
Okay, okay. Well taken. Thanks, Jim. Please, come on up.
My name is Gary Swoverland, and I have a cabin at 36421 Rushmore Boulevard. My wife and I have two parcels on the, first on the left, as you go into County Road, onto Rushmore Boulevard. And we have two concerns about the project. The first concern is the extent and the size of the project. Rushmore Boulevard and Trail does not seem to be in such disrepair that it needs to be replaced and can't be repaired with an overlay. This is only a street providing access to a relatively small number of seasonal and primary residences. Rushmore Trail, which has the largest number of homes, is not much wider than a driveway or in an alley. And on the point where the houses are real close, it's really like an alley. Everything runs together down there. And it seems to us that the way this project is being approached, that it's more like an extension of County Road 16 than just a street, and it shouldn't be that way. The second concern is that the amount of the proposed special assessment, $4,000 per parcel, $8,000 in our case, greatly exceeds any special benefit, which is supposed to be an increase in market value. Our two parcels would receive from a new road. We've got, the first parcel is right on the corner of County Road 16 and Rushmore Boulevard, and it's completely accessible on County Road 16. And the power line, there's an easement from Crow Wing County that runs right through there. That's where the road juts out. And we can't even use that part of that parcel, because of the way the lot's configured. And if you move the road, I don't know if you're going to be moving it into my, you know, property, because that's, I don't know how much you're trying to straighten it out, but that would be, you know, you'd be going right into it. So that, that's, you know, we don't, we don't need that road for that first lot, and it's vacant land. It's just vacant land to give us more privacy. The second, you know, the second parcel where we have our cabin, it's just a two-bedroom cabin. And it's the only house that's on that road that's not on Rush Lake. And it's by far the lowest assessed property, by far. And so by doing a special assessment the way you want to do it, you're charging the people with the lowest-valued properties the highest percentage of the cost. And that, that doesn't really seem right. And so, you know, we just hope that, you know, the elected officials, you know, fulfill their fiduciary responsibility to be good stewards of all of the taxpayers' and property owners' money, regardless of whether we're residents of the city and have the ability to vote, because I can't vote here. But my family has had property here since the 1890s. I've got two grandfathers, I've got great-great-grandfathers that have streets named after them in City Square. And I like to come to Cross Lake. I've got a lot of history here, but not everybody here lives on the lake. And so that's my comments.
Okay, Gary, just one question. That first lot that you're calling a vacant lot, that is a buildable lot. Is that correct? You could sell that lot to somebody to build outside.
Oh, you could, right. But the part that's adjoining Rushmore Boulevard, because of the way the power line goes through there, you have to go in like 100 feet to actually get out of the power lines, you know, being over you, because they cut right across the road, you know, from the lakeside on whatever the road is that comes across, and they, and it cuts right through our property about 40 or about 50 feet in. And so you can't, you can't do anything with that piece. And so it's just, you know, like if anybody was going to do anything with it, I don't know how you do it. It was something that, that...
Well, unfortunately, I think you could put a driveway across it.
Well, you could do that.
So you could access that lot through there.
You could access it, but you can't do much with that piece. It's, most of the frontage is along County Road 16.
The county probably wouldn't want you to put an approach onto the county road.
Well, I think they'd almost have to let you, because it runs all the way down to Johnny Street. And so, I mean, otherwise, they'd block you out of using your property. But...
Well, these are exactly the things that we struggle with, trying to come up with a fair formula for doing assessments. I mean, there's examples, and, you know, there's all kinds of stuff to consider.
Right, but I mean, I have, I have friends that have been assessors, and I spoke to them, and, you know, especially that one piece on the corner, that has got all that access on County Road 16, and I can't use a part on Rushmore Boulevard. You'd want to charge me $4,000 for that, and I don't, it isn't going to do anybody any good. If somebody bought it, they wouldn't need it either. On our cabin, like I said, your method of doing it is charging the people with the lowest-valued properties the highest percentage. I mean, that, this doesn't seem like the way that most taxes work, but, you know, in a special assessment, in a normal situation, I think you'd have fairly equally valued properties, but they're not. They're completely different than, you know, at least when I looked at the assessed values, mine is like, you know, less, more than, the next one is more than double what mine is, and that one, you know, is the corner lot across the street from the vacant lot. So you've got all kinds of things going on there in terms of valuations. So that's, that's what my concerns are, and I don't know how you, how you address them, but, you know, hopefully you just do the right thing for everybody, and don't overdo things, because, I don't know, it's just, it's not, it's not the way that I think... Because, I don't know, it's not, it's not the way that I think things should be done. You need to do what needs to be done. I think an overlay would probably work. I don't think you have to take up the whole road and redo it, so...
Gary, thank you.
Thank you.
Much. Phil, do you have anything to comment on that?
Just that, this is the improvement hearing preliminary, so nothing is final today in terms of the assessment or what properties are assessed. But in any situation where there's a property that we thought, or the previous engineer thought, was accessible, and you go in and there is good reason why it's not a buildable lot, well, certainly that is determined, and that's taken care of. There is a difference between buildable lot and desirable lot. I mean, a buildable lot is a buildable lot. The city is not making a decision about whose house is nice, how many people show up. They're saying everyone's using the road. Every lot has an opportunity to use the road. The praiser says the benefit is 2 to whatever thousand, and the city said $4,000 seems like a fair number within that range for everybody.
How do we handle the fact that he can access off 16, that he's not using Rushmore Boulevard?
He adjoins the city's street, so the city would assess him.
Yeah, we can't, don't touch that, Marsha. I don't think we can.
I didn't understand.
Go, go up here. Got to come up. I'm sorry, but you...
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Excuse me, sir, we have to have everybody identify themselves as talking. That's all.
I have several things I want to talk about.
Good.
But I was going to ask a question, first of all. My name is David Weigren. I live on Whitefish Avenue, 11393. I actually, and the reason I was going to ask this question is, my particular dwelling is on one lot, but I also have a lot next to it that, yes, it could be built on. So do I get my assess for the lot that my house is on, plus the one that I could build on? So that would make $2,000, I think. But I thought it was, if you, because I am taxed on both of the lots. I have a different tax statement for the two lots.
Even with two different tax statements, it might not be that they proposed to assess you too. It might be they looked at it and said that this is one building, one building lot?
Okay, because then across the street from where I live, I own three lots, and only one house. And so I'm just kind of wondering what the assessment thing for me is.
I'm happy to talk to you afterwards.
Yeah, I'll talk to you later.
And I'll show you right on here what they were planning. And again, you have an opportunity, if you think you're being wrong, to state your case.
Then I have a question that I would like to ask the council. I'm not sure what year it was, but several years back, there was a construction from Manhattan Beach Point, as it begins, all the way out to Camp Knudson, along the Trout Lake side of the road. And I'm just wondering what the assessment was for those individuals at that time. I think it was three or four years ago, maybe five years ago. I'm not sure.
I think you know what the assessment was.
I think I do, too.
And I totally agree with you.
I think I know what the assessment is.
I totally agree with you.
And I just, I'm just kind of wondering, because it is a really nice road. And I'm sure it increased the value of those peoples on Trout just marvelously. And I just wonder what their assessment was. I know what the answer was, because I talked to several people in my ventures, and they said, what, they're going to assess you? We didn't get assessed.
So in all fairness, I would like to look into whether we could go back in hindsight and assess those people to make it fair.
Oh, God, then I should, no. It was his idea.
And I'm going to say that David brought it up.
Yeah, all of a sudden, I'm going to be the Taliban who's going to be coming to my door.
I don't know if it could, but that was definitely a missed opportunity on Anchor Point and Manhattan Point. I don't know what the council did at that time. I wasn't here. But it was a missed opportunity, and I agree with you personally.
Okay, so then, okay, so now I'm done with the Taliban stuff. Anyway, I do have, I have, I have kind of gone around my neighborhood mostly. I'm farther out toward Camp Knudson than, I'm on the west end out there. And I've just, I have a list of people that I went from door to door. And I said in this, I said, as property owners on the Whitefish side of Manhattan Point, we oppose the proposed project area, blah, 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 to be discussed. Yes, it's the same one.
Okay, okay, you've got it.
Well, okay, so anyway, this, I made this up, so I don't know if it's any good or not. Anyway, it says, "The proposed project area five to be discussed on Wednesday, July 2nd," it was, but now it's this one. "We believe the $1,000 assessment is excessive, and other alternatives such as seal coating should be considered." And then I have those people signed, and... So anyway, it isn't a universal thing that people are happy about it, so...
Okay, David, I got one comment to make, and Phil, maybe you could help with this. But you've got three properties on one side of the road, two properties on the other.
Lots.
Lots. Has anybody ever asked, you want to consolidate those all into one on one side and one on the other, and then you would have one assessment for each? And if that would be possible for these people to do?
Well, you know, I mean, I've owned it for 35 years, and so I own the, I own three. The one on the, it'd be on the north side of the road. Those are lots I just purchased five years ago. There's one dwelling on there. But the ones that I've owned for 30 years, there's been two dwellings. I've always gotten two statements. One for the lot that's got a house on it, and the other that doesn't, so. And I get three separate statements for those three lots.
I get three separate statements for mine, but it's one property. They're joined together. So they, so...
Yeah, well, it is, I just have one address for each.
For each?
I just have one address for each.
But they're still individual. I've got one address for three.
I have one address for each side.
Oh, okay.
But I get, when I get my tax statements, I get five different statements.
Right, that's okay. So Phil, I mean...
So my question was, am I assessed $5,000 or am I assessed $2,000?
And I'm, like I said, I'm happy to, I don't know if everyone wants to hear what everybody's getting, at least preliminary assess. I really will sit down, and we can together figure out what that is. But I just want to point out, again, just because you have multiple parcel IDs, or you're getting multiple property tax statements or whatever, doesn't mean you have multiple lots by this assessment. I did have a call from one person that lives, I'm not going to sit on any, you'll probably figure out who it is, if you know your neighborhood. They live on the corner of Hilltop and Whitefish Avenue. And they were concerned. They have two parcels, they have two different parcel ID numbers. But the way it was set up in the assessment was, they would be one assessment. They combined the lots. And in this report, which I don't even know if this is online, but there are a lot of papers in the back that I had to come up to speed on when I took this project over. And they've identified where they're assessing and what your preliminary assessment, the mock assessment, is. So I can, with a little bit of time, I can give you direct information, which you can still go forward and, you know, state your case, but I want to give you accurate information as you go forward, so.
So anyway, those are my concerns. I personally will not write a check for whatever it's going to be for that improvement. And so I will opt for the interest, and I will make that, whatever it is.
So you'll make a payment on your property taxes?
Well, I mean, if I'm going to be assessed on it, I'm going to just let it...
Drag it out.
Drag it out.
Yep.
I'm not going to write a check. I refuse to do that.
Yeah. And I wanted to add to this, Mr. Mayor, that I have a copy of this that Char provided. And it has, it looks like there's 18 signatures on this, two are crossed out that are on another petition. And it's as David read up there. And I'm looking up kind of at the addresses. It's 16 parcels that are at least on this one. And you have writing on the back, so maybe there's even more. So it's at least 16 on this. I just want to, for the record, indicate that there's at least 16 on the front, and...
Five or six on the back, huh?
Four more on the back, so that makes a total of 20 parcels that would be part of this petition, so.
Okay, so I guess the only thing in that is that if you have multiple lots, and I think if they're joined together with one address, I think they're going to be one assessed property. I hope that I'm right in saying that. Okay, come on up.
I imagine. Henry Gutzman, 36484 Rushmore. That would be wonderful if you were correct with that statement. But I would like to say that I have two lots. My house is on both lots, so they're not a buildable lot that I can sell. I tried to consolidate them, but being in two different subdivisions, the county would not allow me to consolidate the two parcels into one, and so...
I would love for Phil to identify your place and tell you if that's one or two assessments, though. I mean, that's a good example.
I'm about the fourth parcel in.
If your house is in the middle of them, they're both together.
Well, it's not in the middle. Mostly, it was built as a cabin on one lot, and then they extended the cabin a couple of years later, and they built that part on the second lot.
Okay, but...
And so it's mainly on one lot, but I do own two lots. The other item, it's not here and addressed, is the mailboxes. And I assume that's for the winter, for snowplowing. I think they look ugly, the extensions. I like my mailbox. Since I'm only here four months in the summertime, I'd be willing to take the mailbox down in the wintertime to stay away from having you hit it with the snow plows. But I oppose that part of your reconstruction.
I've talked to Ted about that, that is the city's policy, that they'd like to put the swing arm, the ugly, unattractive swing arms.
They are ugly. I looked at them, I would drive by, and I don't like them. I just tell you that.
No, I understand. I've heard that before.
Thank you.
And you do have the option to leave your mailbox up there, but you will assume the risk of snow knocking it over. And, Mr. Gutzman, I mean, if you want to pull it down, that is actually a great idea if you don't want it knocked down, especially if you're not going to be here, so.
But if the city puts a swingarm in and they hit it with a plow, they will replace it. If you keep your mailbox that you want, and the city hits it with the plow, you're going to replace it again.
Ted's not hitting them with plows. He's pushing heavy snow that's blowing the mailbox.
All right, whatever, if they disappear. Please, in the back corner, come on up.
I will be rehashing a lot of things that have been said here, so...
Name, name and address, please.
It's Jim Peterson, 11537 Whitefish Avenue. I own two lots on the front side, two lots on the back side. So I run into some of the same things that Mr. Weigren runs into. I'd like to know if it was one lot or not. I know when I built the cabin, they would not let me sell one of the lots as a buildable lot. So I had to build on two lots. It's 120 feet. When my dad purchased it in 1965, it was two 60-foot lots. So that's one of the questions I have, is how can the lots across the road that are back lots be assessed the same amount of money as a front lot that's on the lake? Because the property value is not even close to the same. Second thing I'd like to know is, the lots there are all over the place. My neighbor has 60 feet. My other neighbor has 90 feet. How are they assessed? Are they going to be assessed $4,000 or $1,000? And how is that fair? If you can figure out the cost per foot of the asphalt, you should be able to make an assessment by foot on the property. So I wonder about that. And the last question is, why are we as residents of Cross Lake being asked to pay for a mistake on Whitefish Avenue? I don't know about the other places, but it's true. Couple of years ago, Trout Lakeside, beautiful road put in, they paid nothing. You turn the corner and you come down our little spot, and we're getting assessed money. And I just don't think that's right. I think what we should do is get it so that it's fixed, like the Trout Lakeside, and then the next time, assess everyone. That's what I...
Thank you, Jim. Please, come on up.
My name is Susan Deris, and I have a cabin at 11951 Whitefish Avenue. And I'm up here tonight because I'm wondering why the city council has decided to assess property owners instead of putting, as you have in the past, the road improvements in the general budget, and we pay for it with our taxes. That's one of my questions. And we all use those roads. I mean, tourists use them, we use them, everyone uses those roads. And I, if this is going to be a new situation, we're going to do this, I think you should be asking the entire city and all lot owners to be able to speak, to address this. Because it isn't just these five properties. This is for future and everyone who lives in Cross Lake, and it's a big change. And so I think that that needs to be addressed before you go any further with this.
So you believe there should be no assessments?
We should keep it the way it is. Everyone uses these roads. We've been paying for it out of our general taxes, and I think that's the way it should go. It's more fair. People who have huge properties pay a little more, and they pay for their roads that way. People who, you've addressed people who don't even have lake property, and they're getting charged. Why should they? It's in your taxes. It would be more fair. It's based on your market value.
Do you think...
And I think this is the wrong way to go about paying for these public roads. And you don't even have most of the city involved in this decision, so...
Do you think Whitefish Avenue should be replaced at this point?
I don't know. I listened to your presentation, and you made a good, you made a good presentation to me that maybe this part needs to be done. But it's the way that you're charging us for it that I really am opposed to. And I really believe you need all the residents of the city to know what's happening here tonight, because it's going to affect everybody in the future, not just us, so.
Thank you very much, Susan. John?
I'm John Deris, Susan's husband. I'm here to support her position. And we know these are difficult decisions, and that you don't make them arbitrarily. But still, the fairness of it, as Susan pointed out, does seem to be to us not quite square. And we would like to see a continuation of the policy before this change. And we'd like to thank those members of the council who have supported that position. And that's all I have to say.
John, thank you very much.
You too.
I'm Janine Jaeger. I'm at 15413 Birchnarrow's Road. And I have a construction, you know, question about you're going to reconstruct, and you're going to do drainage. Does that mean that you're going to be widening the roadway, or is it going to stay the same? Because we're on a property that's across the lake, across the street from the lake, and our driveway is really close to the road. So I'm wondering, am I going to start taking pine trees out of my front yard? Or how do you do the construction? Do you get so much off the road that's already there?
The intent would be to put the road back the same width it is? Very similar to the same level it is? Because if we raise the road, then we risk, some people have flat driveways to their garage, and then it goes in. So we recognize that this is an up-north area. You don't want it widened out. You don't want trees taken down. So we'll do the best we can to just keep it the same width. And if there's areas where we can put a little swale in without creating havoc in the environment, we'd seek to try and do that.
Okay, so is there anywhere where you can see a map of actually what you might take off of someone's side of the road or not?
Not yet, because we just did the preliminary.
Okay.
But the impact is attempting to just stay within where the paved area is. And then we realize a lot of people have driveways that are paved up to it. So we'll have to replace those up to a point to match them back in. But it's to try and rebuild it, very similar, very same location as what it is today.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And my estimation, or my inclination is, when you do your full reclamation of bedrock, at the drainage points of our two drains, I'm afraid that your estimation of $215,000 for the project is going to go up. The drains there have been there for over 30 years. Debris has been getting into it over those 30 years, and the deterioration of the sidewalls, I would suspect, are pretty bad. So I would think you would have to make a greater increase for my, you know, just common sense of the drainage of that particular area. And who pays for that? And obviously, you've thought about it a little bit. My other concern is the transverse pipe that goes to the lake. That has been, what I can see on the lakeside, a plastic pipe. And I get to the point of thinking, once you figure out and dig up the drain, you're going to see that the transverse pipe is really, really bad, and that my property is going to be scarred again. Which I don't mind. I like to see new grass grow there after it gets all replaced and put back in. But I think your estimation for that drainage part is well underestimated. Okay? My second question is, on the Boulevard Trail intersection change, the little triangle of grass is going to be overlaid and made into a T-intersection. My question is, will a reflective sign or overhead lighting be placed in that area to tell oncoming traffic that this is a dead end, or a left or a right? So that is my only question.
Charles, thank you. I would assume any of that stuff...
So how to handle the intersection will be further designed, you know? Some people have said, just fill that grass in with blacktop. I differ with that. I think we have to think a little bit more about that. But reflective signs, signage, important, lights. You say put a light, and then I'll have six people in here saying, why'd you add a light? Never had a light out here.
Yeah.
So...
I think...
But the safety aspect certainly addressed.
Safety aspect, yes. Reflective sign. It'd be very helpful to know that at that dark intersection, because it does change.
And one of the aspects of going from this next stage, if the city agrees to it, is we actually get in and start doing the plans, and we start laying out things, and we talk about where the impacts are that the previous person asked. We show that intersection and start getting input in from the residents, too, like, you know, can you live with this? This is what we're seeing, you know? So we have the whole next step to do in a short period of time. And we have the ability to send things out electronically, or put them up on the city's website for people to look at, and, you know, kind of stay in tune with what we're laying out.
Yeah. So during the winter months, I'm also the plow person that Ted really knows more about. And I like to give up my grass duties in the triangle area, so I also do that. So I appreciate it. I am for the full depth reclamation of the property and of the triangle. But I do worry about the drainage.
And we do, if this goes into design, we do want to go over there and dig around in there, I mean, poke around and look at that. One of the aspects of what the city is doing in terms of assessment is, the assessment is, again, market value-based. So if the previous estimate is light, and it adds dollars to that, your assessment is independent of that. That cost will have to be reviewed by the city.
So the assessment is the assessment. Any overage goes to the city.
But that drainage is important, very much.
Between my property and the zimbal property on the other side, since it goes underneath the road, so...
And you have, right, prior to your property, I believe there's a pretty good dip that's showing again, right?
A little bit. Even the history of the road. When my father-in-law was living there, and he said before the city council 31 years ago, that if you don't put a drain there, you have to put a drain there. And the city did not. And sure enough, the first rainfall after the project was over, our property got flooded over within a certain amount of time, and the drains were finally put in, so...
Did your dad do it, or did the city come and do it?
The city came and put in the two drainage. Whereas before, the dirt road that was there, because he was against it, always drained on its own natural course and never puddled. And he was an architect in mind, and saw that, he could see the drainage with the hardtop being there. So, thank you for listening.
I thank you, sir. John, come on up.
I'm John Forney, 11797 Whitefish Avenue. A couple of things. One, we talked about market value, and I think a major component in market value is the city of Cross Lake. And so I look at it, and I say, well, what makes the city? And one of the major things that makes a city are the streets. And those streets are available to all of us, whether we're full-time or whether we're seasonal. It's available to FedEx and so on. It's available to Files Honeewagon. I mean, anybody can use our streets. So they're part of our infrastructure. And I think, long run, the only way we can keep going on having a good city is if everybody takes a part of making it a good city. So I think, I would urge you to go back and think about the policy that somehow was skipped over last time, and maybe continue to skip it over and figure out a way to put it into the taxes for the city. So that's the first part. It's also an infrastructure that provides other things that we like, like police and fire. Without the streets, they're at a terrible disadvantage. Then I'm going to switch gears completely. I think the council knows that I care about the lakes. And drainage has been a major issue that we've talked about in a number of different ways, because there is properties that are dedicated to the city, or were dedicated to the city years ago when they platted the area out on Manhattan Point. So I guess I'd like the opportunity, if we can, to sit down and say, okay, what are you going to do about these various areas?
Definitely.
That also falls under my responsibilities with the Cross Lakers to...
Rightaways, are you talking about? Rightaways, are you talking about?
Yeah, I guess they're rightaways, easements, whatever they are, the areas that run out to the water from the streets.
There is a group that's talking about that now, what to do about them.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm just, I would like to look at what's being, I'm not on that committee.
So you just want to be informed before a decision's made?
But I would like to know, based on my interests. So, John, one thing?
We'd like any input from residents that can show us strategic opportunities to kind of check this water up, let it filter before it goes...
Well, I think you had a surveyor out there. Somebody was surveying.
Yeah, in one location, but there's probably more than that, so...
So, John, just to touch up on, you think that the infrastructure is part of it, and it's a city deal, and do you feel the same way about the sewer, the sanitary sewer?
No, I don't, because I can't walk up to somebody's house that's on the sanitary sewer and say, I want to use your bathroom.
Well, you probably could.
Can't do that.
Okay.
So, I mean, I do see that as a major difference.
It's a very contribution to the lakes and the quality of it.
I appreciate that, but at the same time, it's used for their sanitary purposes.
Okay.
That's the first use of it.
Yep, thanks a lot. Thank you. Please, come on up.
I have a couple of simple questions. I'm Thelma Williams, and I live on Wild Wind Ranch Drive. And like these people said, everybody uses the road. I'm the first one on the house, on the road, I mean. And I see three garbage trucks go by for 13 people, and I think that's unnecessary. But my question is, on our pavement, do we have gravel or sand underneath it?
Yes. Trying to remember. I think in one of the borings, you had sand, and in another borings, you had gravel. Yep.
And then you also made a statement saying that you had to do more on our road than somebody else's, and what was that?
Well, I think on your road, the previous engineer put a design together, and what they were doing is, they're doing the full-depth reclamation, which chews it up, but what they're going to do is subcut it. They plan to subcut one of the lanes, because there's a lot, there's been significant cracking, and they identified it, that they thought maybe when it was originally built, it was built with substandard, maybe some organically-based materials underneath the road. And that settles different than, like a granular material. An organic material kind of breaks down over time and creates a void space. So they plan to do half of the road for the entire length. When we did these borings, it showed us that the soils were not great in all of it. And it makes more sense to us to do the subcut through the whole thing, create the same composition for the road to be built, so it lasts the longest versus being different from lane to lane.
So you're going to do both lanes, you're not just going to do one lane? Well, that's good.
Yep, we're going to do it right.
But I agree with these people that have come up here. We do pay taxes, and why are we having to pay for our road? Or, another question is, if we do, isn't there any special government funds or anything that you can get to help us out?
So I'm not going to hit the tax, general tax one, that's a city policy.
You're going to pay for the road either way.
But... It's hard for any community to try and obtain road funding. In my experience as an engineer, usually, through water, or sanitary sewer, or stormwater environmental, there's opportunities. The other part of it is, Cross Lake is considered a pretty wealthy area, so it's hard for Cross Lake, with your median household income, to compete against, like Ironton, Crosby, Aiken, places, Pine River even, that they will have a median household income that's probably 30% of what it is here. So funding typically goes to the more needy communities. The only funding we're probably going to see, honestly, is if we partner with the county on stuff. And otherwise, or if there's an economic development opportunity where transportation facilities need to be increased to support jobs, otherwise, it's going to be difficult in this community.
That funding opportunity affects this town in a lot of different aspects.
Well, it can look into it anyway.
Yeah, oh, no, they look into it, absolutely. Yep, thank you. Who's next? Ann Shrupp.
Ann Shrupp, 33873 Wild Wind Ranch Drive. I have a request, and maybe this is the wrong place, but this does say that we're going to get standard mailbox supports. And currently, our mailboxes are out on County Road 16, or 103. And it's a nightmare to get your mail out of those boxes when the traffic's going by 50 miles an hour. Everybody on our street would love to have our boxes at the end of our driveways. So when they put in the new street, we'd like to consider, or at least tell me, how do we go about requesting our mailboxes to be at the end of our driveway?
Probably the postmaster, huh?
Yeah. So unfortunately, I've done this a long time, and have gotten crossways with the postmaster once in a while, which it seems like an easy thing, move a mailbox. Rural routes are almost, and my shorter answer is, we would try and get mailboxes on Wild Wind Ranch Drive. Makes sense. The challenge sometimes is the postmaster and the rural route carrier. The rural carrier has almost, like, contracted to drive a certain distance...
Right.
...to deliver the mail. So when you take 13 mailboxes from this location, and they have to drive up and around, it's almost like you've just changed the equation, and they won't fight that.
They come every day with a box from Amazon to somebody's house.
I know, I know, I know. We would, it makes total sense. We would certainly advocate and try and get that to happen, but I've seen it squashed in Pequot Lakes. I had the rural route carrier almost try and throw something at me when I made a visit.
It's like, our address should be County Road 103 instead of Wild Wind Ranch Drive.
I agree. I think what you're saying makes total sense. We can try and do it. I just don't promise good results.
Should that come from us, or can it come through this project?
No, no, go after the postman.
All right.
Both. Good luck. Do both. We'll make a request as well.
Please, come on up.
My name is Cynthia Levy. I live at 12533 Whitefish Avenue. I own a lot and a house, on a lot, so I have two, which I have no problems with paying for. The things that I've been, my significant other has the lot behind me, and his legal address is my house. And why would he be getting assessed if he doesn't live on Whitefish Avenue? The old adage, well, he uses the road, too. Well, like we're just saying, so does the post office, so does the garbage man, so are they getting assessed, too? I do agree with the point that Mrs. Daris brought up. I think that's great. People who have houses that are millions of dollars, because there are many in Cross Lake, of which I am not one, and they should be assessed appropriately because of what they have going on there and where they live. How do, I even, I guess I don't understand why, and I'm going to have to look at this map list, whatever that you have, as far as why the house behind, or why the lot behind me is getting assessed.
Well, I'm going to just go out on a limb and answer that a little bit, but it's an available lot that three years from now could have a house building on it. I believe that's it.
But the address will not be Whitefish Avenue. I don't know what the address will be.
Does it touch Whitefish Avenue?
Well, but it's serviced by a non-access road that is not taken care of by the city, as is Whitefish Trail. Nobody plows Whitefish Trail. The people that live on Whitefish Trail, they plow, take care of it themselves. And there are people from there that, they were at the very first meeting last winter that we had here. So are they getting assessed, too?
I would think if you had the ability to get a driveway off of Whitefish Avenue, you would be assessed. If you didn't have that ability, you probably wouldn't.
But it's not even their driveway, it's the road. It's a non-maintenance road.
Yeah, well, again, that might be one of those things that the engineers got to take a look at.
We look at them. These are the first shot, the engineer put the first shot out, and they're...
Thank you.
I'm certain there's mistakes, and it happens.
All right. And I would like to confirm that I thought Mrs. Daris's idea was awesome. I think it's very accurate. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You betcha, thanks. Please, come on up.
Hi, my name's Dan McInch. I live at 12533 Whitefish Avenue. With, I guess I better color my significant other rather than my landlord. But, no, I just, my comments or questions are in two areas. First of all, related to the actual proposed improvements, and kind of how the decisions were made, as far as that goes. It sounds like Whitefish Avenue is going to be a patch and overlay is kind of the generic term being used, but obviously, there's pretty wide variation in the condition of the road in different areas. I'm just, you know, I've noticed there's certain areas that are really badly alligator-cracked, and probably suggests that there could be some subsoil issues there, too, as well. So could this actually morph into a little bit more than a patch and overlay in some areas? I'm concerned that, you know, we get bang for our buck, and that when we're done, we have a road that's going to hold up for a lot of years, you know?
The patch, I will say the patch is removing the bad stuff, taking the subsoil out that's bad and putting in better.
I'm just, you know, I've noticed there's certain areas that are really badly alligator cracked and probably suggests that there could be some subsoil issues there too as well. So could this actually morph into a little bit more than a patch and overlay in some areas? I'm concerned that, you know, we get bang for our buck in that when we're done, we have a road that's going to hold up for a lot of years, you know?
The patch, I will say the patch is removing the bad stuff, taking the subsoil out that's bad and putting it better, re-putting, patch, and then overlaying. So do we know the extent of it? No. Could it get bigger? Could.
Oh, okay.
But I don't think it'll turn into a full-depth reclamation hallway through it. I think some of the patches will be bigger and...
Yeah, and I generally agree with, I mean, I think that general category that it falls in is correct. The road, you know, is in pretty good shape in a lot of areas, but there's some that are in pretty bad shape too. We happen to live just south of Manhattan Beach Boulevard, where the most easterly intersection is with Whitefish. And that's an extremely flat grade through there. And I think this is probably brought up at previous meetings, but just concerned about, I don't think you're going to get transverse drainage on the road, so hopefully, you guys can do some kind of swaling or something to get the water off, because right now, the edges are starting to crack up pretty bad, and we get a lot of ponding. You know, it just gets to be an issue, that's all. Another question I had is, is there some consideration being given, other than up in that where Hilltop intersects, for some possible site distance improvements? A lot of people walk on the road. I don't think any of us want to really change the character too much, because it's quaint and it's a beautiful walk and everything. But at the same time, you know, there's like an extremely sharp curve just south of our property that, you know, if you're not really watching what you're doing, cars can sneak up on you pretty quick on that curve. Just wondered if that was something that was considered, or...
Not, so with a patch and overlay, you wouldn't get beyond the pavement to do anything? With the drainage, there's opportunities to do the swale. We haven't discussed, and actually hasn't even been brought up, to my knowledge until now, about pedestrian use. I've driven out there, I tried to drive out there. During one of the rare rain events we had this year, saw people walking, thought, wow, there's quite a few people that walk along here. But no, that hasn't been discussed, site changes or widen shoulder or anything like that.
Well, and I think it might even be a hazard beyond just pedestrians at that corner there. It's a pretty nasty, sharp corner with some trees that are extremely close to the road, creating obstacles for cars to hit if they meet at that corner, so... So it's something to think about.
City right-of-way, technically, you know, we can take some of those things down. Anecdotally, taking trees down is tough.
Right, I understand.
So we do it surgically if we have agreement, and we try to do it in the best manner we can. We certainly would look at it. And again, I think if that is truly a concern, the city would have to be appraised of it, and we'd make a decision how far to go.
Okay, appreciate that. The other topic, I guess, you know, is assessments. It's probably on everybody's mind, but as my significant other said, you know, I do have a backlot that all I have is a platted street that goes out to Whitefish. And it seems a little bit uneven to have to pay a full assessment on that. I'm not opposed to the general idea of assessing part of the project and the rest getting paid out of the general fund, but I'm a little confused on this value-based, assessment-value-based approach, because yes, maybe initially, that's how you come up with a general overall improvement, you know, or value increase, but then you just chop it up into pie anyways, and everybody gets the same assessment. Well, certainly, living in a, on a house off the lake, our valuation, our value is not going to go up anywhere near as much as someone that's got a million-dollar mansion on the lake, so... I'm a little confused as to that, and I probably need to sit down and read what the policy is, so I understand it a little bit better. But it just seems like there's a little conflict between how it works in reality and kind of the general statement that's being made about it. But that's all I have.
Thank you, Dan. Anyone? Are you sure? Okay, there you go.
I have...
It's kind of like a bidding war here.
My name is Margaret Pato. I'm at 12896 Rushmore Boulevard. When we were here in February? We were told, this was with the other...
Engineer.
Engineer and all that. We were told we were going to be, we would have to pay $1,500 for that to be done, for this to be done, to replace the road. And then there was talk about the assessment. And I still don't understand where the difference is. And so are we not being charged that $1,500, and we're only going to be charged the $4,000, or...
I'm not sure what the $1,500 is. The $4,000 is the market benefit assessment that the city's identifying for Rushmore. But I'm not sure what the $1,500 is.
Okay. I, maybe I mistook...
Well, it could have been something that was floating around before this final assessment or something that came up.
Well, it was just that it came to something like, that we would be responsible for $156,000 or something, and then the city would pay the rest of it or something.
That was kind of the, was talked about, it was just going to be overlayed, but it's not going to be overlayed.
Oh.
That's the different part.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to try to get that in my head.
It won't be both.
Yeah, I just was trying to make sure that I had it right in my head.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Mayor, if someone else still comes up, that's fine, but there was another signature. I'm going to read it.
Please.
So everyone is aware that this one was received on 8/15. It was Whitefish Avenue Petition. It says, "As property owners on Whitefish Avenue, we are opposed to any assessment for the road improvements on our street and others as outlined in your July 21, 2021 informational open house letter to us. We oppose assessing homeowners for street improvements rather than paying for them out of the general budget, which has been the tradition up to now. Roads are used by all our citizens, and the cost for them should belong in the general city budget to be shared among all of us and not assessed to individual homeowners. To our knowledge, our neighbors on Manhattan Point Boulevard Road and Anchor Point Road were not assessed for major and recent road improvements. There are 11 parcels represented..." "...and 12 signatures."
Thanks, Phil. Okay, does anybody else have, please? Yeah. This is it? No, I don't mean this is it, but this is it.
Well, one of them is at Susan Daris, 11951 Whitefish Avenue. I, of course, during the, being home all the time, I zoomed in on one of your council meetings, and it happened to be the one that you were discussing this. And you were going to make a decision that day, and I have to thank the mayor for putting that decision off and giving us time as citizens, and during the summer, when many of us are here, to have an informational meeting and this meeting also. I know you put a lot of work into this, and I know it's hard, so I wanted to thank you for doing that, because sometimes, many of the decisions are made during the winter when none of us are here. So I wanted to thank you for that. And then again, I urge you to keep everything in the tax rolls. I think that's the fairest way. Thank you.
I'll do my best. All right, anybody? Going once? Going twice? I guess that's it. Is there anything else we have to cover?
No, I don't know if you were entertaining a resolution or if that's at another meeting? Okay. I would just add, and I don't want to make everyone stay late, but I will stay and answer questions if you want to ask what was originally proposed for assessment with your parcel. I'll show you what I know.
So he could dig the book out and pick out your spot and show you what it is and see what it is.
He'll have to tell you where your lot is. They'll have to say where their lot is, because I don't know everyone's parcel ID number, but I'll tell you what I know.
But that would be valuable to some of those in question. Thanks, Phil.
Yep.
Okay, I guess I'm looking, yeah, motion to adjourn? Second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thanks all for coming.